So I will call the meeting to order. It is seven thirty on the dot. And we can start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My allegiance to the founding of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I think there's the attendance. She just grabbed that Cory and circulate please. Attendance will come to you. Thank you. Here you go, Tom. We have the minutes from the November meeting. Did everyone have a chance to look over it? I did read it, but. I am looking at it again. Yeah. Oh, which one?
November twenty seventh.
Right, okay. All right, we had November ninth and we have, we'll do separate, just for the ease of the minutes, we will do two separate votes. I will start with the farthest away in time first with the November ninth meeting. Can I get a motion to, or can I, I will make a motion to approve the Thursday, November ninth meeting minutes? Can I get a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, so the November ninth meeting minutes have passed and then we have the November twenty. A separate sheet. Yeah. I don't know. Wait, hold on. Yes, I do. Sorry. I thought it was, I thought I pulled it up. This was the special meeting for the resolution to change our bank that was requested by the BOE. So this looked fine to me.
I would put it as absent, but I would not require.
Right. Right.
You, I could just eliminate that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, this was a very quick meeting. We just needed to provide this resolution to the BOE so that they could proceed with their side of helping the library make the transfer. Any questions on this? I'll make a motion to approve the November twenty seventh meeting. This is a special meeting, the meeting minutes. Can I get a second? Okay, good luck. Thank you. All in favor? Hi, any opposed? Great. All of the meeting minutes have passed. Thank you. So we can now move on to our regular business. We can start with Frances and our WLS report and our final one from Frances.
That's right. On this Francis of Canada day.
He likes that.
The WLS said it's the last meeting for the year on the last Tuesday, last month on November twenty ninth. There were two sets of meetings, one was the annual meeting, WLS, which is held once a year. And during that meeting, which lasted about fifteen minutes or something, the executive directors have given overview of the activities of the WLS of the year. And the kind of activities that have been reported to this and this board for the year. So that, that was it. And the second item on that agenda was the the nomination and approval of the new trustees. Three trustees were, were approved, one for District Four, South Silent, and District Eight, Larchmont Memorial, and now on District Fourteen, where our friend David Manner was approved. So the board has formally approved these nominations. And, and this new trustees, this one is at the next meeting, which will be in January for a term of five years. There is still another vacancy for Yonkers. And so there is a search going on for them. So that was, in, in summary, the the annual meeting. And after the annual meeting, we adjourned and then on then the, the regular meeting with pretty much one item on the agenda, which was the approval of the operating site. And I think I gave you the details of the, of your bringing of the budget in my last meeting. That was formally approved by the board, so we have the budget for, for next year. And the committees were asked to report. There was really hardly any people to report. So we adjourned and pretty much say farewell to the outgoing, outgoing trustees. And, and that's it. And with that, I really like to thank all the membership, the trustees, the support that you have given me. As I said, I'm like, but dear boys, once you're my friend, I don't let you go.
Excellent.
Thank you for the cooperation and the friendship and the support that I receive is something that I'm going to treasure for very, very long.
Thank you for your service, Frances.
You're my pleasure.
Thank you. Wonderful. Thank you, Frances. We will miss you and we will miss listening to everything going on at that, at the WLS level and I'm sorry I missed the beginning of your, your, your expressions.
It's unforgivable.
It is. I, I have deep, deep shame about it. But, but I hope to make it up to you by saying. You. But, but I wanted to, in all seriousness, express my appreciation for your devotion and dedication and how much you brought to the role. And I was thinking actually on my drive here about just reflecting over the past many years of having the privilege of working with you and how your, you know, your kind of distinctive focus on the matters that relate not just to to our library, but to the, to the county's libraries and to the nation's libraries were so magnetic and, and brought a focused attention, I think, of all of us in a way that felt really, you know, meaningful and important. And you, you really elevated the conversation every month and, and beyond. And so I also treasure having had the chance to, to work with you and can't wait to see what book you're gonna write and and, and can't wait to see what you do next. And it's been a real honor and thank you very much.
I just want to echo everything Whitney said. Frances, it's been a pleasure to serve with you. I know for a fact that the WLS employees who always get a, a range of trustees to, to work with expressed their regret because they thought that you were truly one of the most effective, thoughtful, voice of reason contributors over the course of these past five years. And they said that they would miss you. I know we will all miss you. And we know that you're, you're, you're here with us still. And I'm also excited with all of these expressions of sadness and sympathy. I'm very excited that David Manner will be joining us and I know he'll do a terrific job. And I'm looking forward to that too as well.
Thanks. So yes, now it's my turn to echo and I will say that you, while you have big shoes to fill, David, we're really excited and know you'll do a fabulous job representing New Rochelle and, and, you know, taking us and the conversation and advocacy to the next level too. And so lots of good things ahead for everybody, I hope. And that's kind of it for my president's report. It's not really a report. It's more of a emotional expression. But that's not a technical term here on this agenda. So we will move on to Tom and the director's report.
Thank you, Whitney. And I will make this fairly quick. It's in many instances, a report of the status of many of our grants that are in various states of, of movement. And first one, our grant that we applied for in August twenty twenty one, our Huguenot Children's Library Project was installing three new air conditioners on all three floors. Long completed. We had a very happy, cool and energy efficient summer in that building. So that's good news. The, the main library side, we're not at the end of the road yet. We're hoping to be approaching that. And that is of course related to the third floor renovation. Where if you've gone up there, you've seen so many changes. We've got new study rooms, new carpet, new lighting, new wall paint, a new, a new information desk and an area for computers that overlook the park. Study rooms. The one thing that's left is the enclosure of the teen area and two conference rooms. The, we are going to be having a desculping meeting with the architect next week to talk about the status of the bids. We're a little concerned about the, the, the bids because they may be over budget, but we think we have some alternatives too that we want to explore. So stay tuned for all of that. In terms of the fire stopping project, I received a report today from our architect who is helping to manage the project along with a third party consultant who is checking the work of, that our, our vendor Gleason Power is doing. And according to our architect Doug Emilio, he says, the fire barrier restoration project continues to make progress. The contractor reported that as of December eighth, the work completed is as follows. Third floor, ninety-five percent complete. Second floor, ninety percent complete. First floor, seventy percent complete. The cellar, fifteen percent complete. We did our last inspection on Friday, December eighth, twenty twenty-three, and the special inspector did their last inspection on December fifth, twenty twenty-three. And so we are obviously making good progress. We're not quite certain when this project will be done, but we're projecting in the first quarter of twenty twenty-four. And it would appear that our budget, it seems to be on target. Thank goodness. And we've had very few change orders. They've been fairly minor in scope. So we'll hope to continue this. Good luck as we move forward. So in terms of the, the, the grants that were submitted in August of twenty twenty-two, we of course had a grant that was successfully funded for the Huguenot Children's Library and, and the main library. And I'll start once again with the Huguenot Children's Library. And that was a, that was a grant that really covered a variety of renovations from the second floor to the first floor to the basement. And we're nearly done. As a matter of fact, talking with the contractor, we, we are hoping to be complete as of Wednesday of next week. And starting from the basement and exterior working up, we've replaced all the exterior facades that truly needed to be replaced. It was cracking. There were holes. Apparently, we think that unbeknownst to us, there were these invisible areas that we think vermin were getting in. So that has all been taken care of and it looks great. What also has been done is the, the basement space was tired because of many years of, 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 of use. But also we had experienced a water overflow from the lake, you know, in front of the high school and behind our library. And that did some destruction to the flooring. We have a new floor that has been poured down. That looks really good. We painted that space. We're in the process of having the, the cabinets sort of sanded and revarnished. They don't look new, but they, but they look, they look better. And we're also hopefully next week, that Wednesday, we'll see the, a new countertop that will be put in, in the kitchen, a new sink, a bigger sink so that, so that we can better handle all those art projects that now don't seem to work as well as we'd like. With that, we'll go to the first floor. We have a really nice new renovated desk on that first floor. If you've gone in there, it's far more efficient and allows for us to, you know, quietly store our, our Westchester Library System gray storage bins that move materials between our library at HCL, the main library and, and the thirty-seven other libraries in the county. So it looks, looks great. That was the major thing on that floor. Finally, second floor, we are nearly complete with a redo of the storage space surrounding the desk on the second floor. If you had been there before, it was a little chaotic. But thanks to the hard work of our librarian Susan Moorhead and our contractor, we've got a desk that's been renovated. We've got all sorts of shelving and storage components there as well as the two closets. So and we, you know, we moved computers around, the wiring and the electrical outlet situation was dire. And wire management, it all seems to be fixed. So that project will be done soon. In the meanwhile, we are moving forward with the acoustical panels in the main library, the noise abatement project. And Kira and Elizabeth have been taking the lead with that. And we've had the vendor in to measure spaces. They were here earlier this week. We're now looking at the panels, the, what, 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 what the, where they'll be distributed and what they'll look like. We'll hopefully have a solution, a decision for that next week. It's a little, fills us with a little anxiety because they're going to be everywhere in the building and we want to just make, make the right choice. And we're being careful about that. So that, we're hoping we'll start sometime in January, February of next year. And when they start, they're going to finish fairly quickly because they just can't afford to Terry. They need to get in, put it all up and then move on to the next project. See what else. We of course are still waiting on the, the grant, the, the grants that you folks approved in August of earlier this year. One was the phase two of the abatement project where the portions of library that weren't covered in phase one are being dealt with in that phase as well as a total new signage effort that, that will be in the main library that desperately needs it because of all the work that we've done and the movement that we've made in terms of moving collections, et cetera. And at the Huguenot Children's Library, we are continuing with renovations in that space. In this instance, we'll be renovating both of the restrooms in the lower level and the first floor, which are over twenty-five years old and again, rather tired. And they'll be upgraded in terms of the facade and also more ADA compliant, et cetera. So we're waiting to hear news. It's been preliminarily approved by the WLS Board in late September and hopefully we'll get a formal approval by the state in June or July or August and then receive money thereafter. Let's see. Um, next is the ARPA grant, which as you folks know, the foundation along with the library applied for funds to build a exterior pavilion in the children's garden. There really is no movement. We're still waiting to hear from the vendor that did the, the mag, magnetic imaging of the space about remediation and removal issues. A little frustrating. She was supposed to have something ready. I was hoping to share, share it with you folks tonight, but she didn't make that deadline. But, so we're all still waiting to get that and we're waiting to constitute the committee that will involve the foundation, board members and library staff to talk about how do we move forward with this, with this exciting effort. Trustee Handbook Club is the last episode, if you will, for twenty twenty-three is happening on Tuesday, Tuesday night of next week, December nineteenth at five PM. Topic is, seems like an appropriate one, financing and managing construction projects. And if you folks are interested, you're, you can sign on and, and zoom it and, you know, use those credits for your trustee education requirement. And twenty twenty-four is around the corner and as is the twenty twenty-four version of this book club. And the first one will begin in January tenth and the title is Problem Solving Strategies for Library Boards and Staff. I'd sent you folks an email about it. I'll send you another one. And that's January tenth, six thirty to eight o'clock. And I believe that's on, also a Zoom event as well. The Friends of the New Rochelle Public Library have got good news there. At a, at their meeting yesterday, they approved our budget request of seventy-three thousand dollars for twenty twenty-four. And all of that money will be going for programming for our children, our teens and our adults. And it's, I think in my tenure, it's the highest amount that we've ever asked for upfront. Over the course of the year, the friends are very generous and will meet our needs if they can on smaller amounts. And in terms of that amount, let's see, children is, it's gotten a five thousand dollar increase because our children's programs, you'll hear more about it from Elizabeth, are becoming so popular. So it will be thirty-two thousand dollars that the friends are contributing for children's programs at both buildings. Teen, we've had an increase of a thousand dollars to seven thousand and the adults are staying even at thirty-four thousand. So thanks to the friends, you know, and, and monies that we have also in our budget, we're able to offer robust programming for our community, which is, I think it's, it's really has quite a reputation in, in the county. We're known for being a library that does great programming and diverse programming. And it's partially due to the amazing support of the friends who work hard to give us the money that they, that they provide us. In terms of the foundation, they are, they are working on future cocktails and conversation events. They have nothing yet planned. I, I am, I forgot to look up the next foundation board meeting. I think it's in January. I can, can forgot to look, but I will send it out to you folks. If you are interested in attending, it'll be in, in person here at the library at seven thirty. And that is it for my report. Happy to answer any questions. Yep, I have a few things. I'm really excited to ask for board approval on the hiring of a, of a new full-time clerk. Our, the person that previously held the job, Rita Calandreza, wonderful person, retired after many years of service here. And so our staff went through a search process and found someone, a local person who's very impressive and has made a really good start to her career here. Her name is Dana Peters. Her annual salary is forty-two thousand nine hundred and seventy-two dollars and ninety-six cents. And Dana's first day of work was November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. So I would ask for a motion to approve that hire.
Great. I am happy to make a motion to approve the hire of Dana Peters with the details as just described by Tom. Can I get a second, please?
A second.
Great. All in favor? Any opposed? No? Thank you and congratulations.
Excited to have her. One final personnel request, and that relates to our pages. We have nine pages that worked very hard for us throughout both buildings and all departments. And if you folks are aware, the New York State Minimum Wage Law has gone up specifically for New York City, I believe, of Westchester. And so most of our pages are paid at that minimum wage. We have nine of them. I would ask for a motion to allow us to, at the beginning of the new year, provide dollar increases for all nine pages.
So just to clarify, this is a dollar per hour increase for online pages. Yes, okay, that's. Just want to clarify that. So in most cases, the dollar amounts are going from, for example, fifteen dollars to sixteen dollars, sixteen dollars and thirty cents to seventeen dollars and thirty cents. So without understanding, I will make a motion to approve a one dollar per hour increase for the nine pages at the New Rochelle Public Library. Can I get a second? Cory, thank you. All in favor? Hi, any opposed? No? Great. And thank you to the pages. I know they work hard for us.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Good. Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Tom.
Yeah, just for the record, I'd just like to pay tribute to the friends, the role that they play and the contribution that they make. So proud of that. In fact, they're the envy of many of the libraries.
Really?
Our, our friends group is one of the top friends groups in the county in terms of what they do, how they manage their book sales and sell books to our community at a modest cost. And give us a lot of money. I mean, most communities are lucky to have one advocacy group. We are extraordinarily lucky with two.
I love. I love the bookstore. I love that bookstore. All right. Good. Thank you, Frances. Assistant Director's report. And Elizabeth? Come sit here tonight, Elizabeth. She gets like the UN style congressional style double speakers.
So based on your recommendations from last month, we reached out to the New Rochelle High School principal, Valerie Cadet Simkins, as well as the Youth Council. Valerie has been really gracious and sort of agreed to share all of our communications with the school community. And in January, we're going to be meeting with Kelly of the Youth Council. So that's really exciting. We have also developed a program charter for our soon-to-be-formed teen advisory board. And we have already started to get some, some interest. So we're really reaching out to both the public and the private middle schools and high schools because we do get volunteers from both types of schools. So our first meeting is slated for February of twenty twenty-four and our program charter is really going to help kind of guide the, the group throughout the year. Additionally, I represented the library in two major collaborations this past month. The New Rochelle Family Court Childcare Advisory Committee, as well as the New Rochelle After School and Summer Learning Partnership. And this, the end of the year, we've started this tradition of suggesting our favorite books of the year. And thanks to our staff and some of the board members who've contributed to that list. We shared that on social media and our newsletters last week and it was, had gotten some, some great response. So for twenty twenty-four, we are starting something called the twenty, the, the reading challenge. Every month we ask you to read a book in a certain criteria. That title can either be self-selected or you can choose from a curated list that we are going to be promoting and publishing. So next year, get your, get your reading list going.
That's excellent. Good. Well, thank you. Thanks, Elizabeth. Those are fun. I, I love a motivational book list. Good. Thank you. Committee reports. Who's the chair of the budget committee? It was me and now I forget who it was. Is it you? Budget? Yeah, there's not, there's nothing. Not yet, but, but.
Not yet.
But January, get buckle up. Buildings and Grounds is me. I know that we're, we don't have anything to report now, but we should probably either in January or February. Community relations. That's me.
I am going to give a quick report of the programming in November and December. So a little recap of what's been going on in November and beginning of December. And then a lot of highlights coming up for the vacation week, the school break, where we know the library always fills that gap of kids being home and, and needing things to do. And, and it's a really killer program. That's planned. So just really quick, I'll, I'll highlight a few things that's been going on since our last report. There has been, the new Shell Plays Hollywood Film Series continues. That was November twelfth. I think that was all since the last meeting. Yes, okay. And all of these next programs that I'm going to rattle off here. And it was, I tried to pick and choose, but they're also well attended and they're also interesting. So I'm just going to report them real quick. And so this, this film had, you know, The Lonely and the Brave, thirty-five people attended. The Yiddish Book Club, that's the one that's heinous, that heinous doing, right? And this, this is the first time she started. That was November fourteenth. Oh, she actually had two already, November fourteenth and December fifth. They were well attended. The Sing Your Heart Out concert, November nineteenth, at a hundred and twenty people attending, which is really, I mean, a lot of them have a really impressive amount of people. And I want to highlight the Young Musicians of Westchester concerts. There were two, one December second, forty-five people attending. And then there was the concert for second graders from the Columbus School, November fourteenth, a hundred and twenty people, a hundred and twenty people attending. And then most recently in December, there was a Rocky Middleton concert, December eighth, with. Um, and then most recently in December, um, there was a, a Rocky Middleton Concert, December eighth, with ninety people attending. And, uh, the, uh, New Rochelle Public Library, um, uh, collaborated with other community programs for the Rudolph Rocks New Row, which was, I, I, I missed it unfortunately. I wasn't joining at my dad's birthday, but, uh, it was December ninth and it had over a thousand people attending, which is so great. And, um, so that's some of the highlights of what's been going on. And I did want to quickly mention, um, all the great work that's going to happen in the week where the, was a little over the week, over a week, um, during December of school break, um, because between Tuesday, December twenty-sixth and Saturday, December thirtieth. Um, I think that there are multiple cor- programs going on every day, uh, for kids. So just, just bring them in any time of day. I don't know if I should go into detail, but there, there are multiple performances, including The Nutcracker, uh, Wonder Parks Puppets, The Missing Creature, Jack Frost, Snowkidding and more. Um, all these live on the website. So I would encourage everybody to go and check out these programs for, um, the children, to keep them busy while they're off school. Um, and just very quickly, um, also the report from VTO Help and Learning Center, um, for November and some upcoming things for December. And they, they, they reported, um, see- seeing arise and patrons needing assistance with critical online support services, uh, a whole range of things that they help our patrons with. Medicare advice, healthcare enrollment, job search, SNAP benefits, food support, unemployment. It's a really long list of great things that they do. Um, I wanted to highlight a couple of important things that are coming up that the center is doing, um, community outreach. They continue their food pantry visits, um, at Isaac Young Middle School. Um, the last one was actually on the thirteenth, but I know that they will continue and it's a great presence for the library, um, card signups, giveaways and, and things like that. And, uh, notary nights, which I know are always, uh, very popular. The next date is on December twenty-first. So that'll be the last one of the year at six thirty. Um, that, those are the two things I wanted to highlight for that. And that is my report.
Could I?
Yeah.
Thank you, Rianna. I just would like to highlight something that you'll find in your folders, which is, um, sort of a, um, um, a newsletter that we're not doing obviously as frequently because our e-blasts are so popular. But I, I think it's worth looking at because it really gives you a real summary of what is happening at our library. And it's, um, amazing, you know, all sorts of programs and services for all ages throughout the year, both buildings. And the person that did this was Lisa Itzkowitz. She worked really hard. She worked with our staff to pull it together. Um, the photographs are by our, uh, Geraldo, who's sitting out in the audience, did a good job with that. And, um, everybody pulled together and create this document that really talks about what's, what's happening here. It's a nice, um, attractive visual informative, uh, document. So recommend.
And how does this get circulated in the community?
I think we're going to be, um, uh, making it available at various apartment complexes, et cetera. We don't mail anymore because it's so, it's, it's really quite expensive. We do drop off. The friends, um, are using this to mail off to their, um, to their subscribers. And I think we're giving some to the foundation in the context of their annual appeal as well. So we're trying to, we're trying to get it out, but it's, but the, the days of mailing this, it's just really, it's a cost prohibitive.
And you do have copies?
Yeah, we have copies in the building.
It's the only thing I would say.
I said I received this in the mail today.
You did. Did you? Because you're.
Yeah, right. I said the community board meetings. Yeah, maybe a bit good idea.
Let me talk to, um, put those.
That's a great idea.
And wouldn't you be able to pick up some copies maybe to drop off, but to some of our local seniors?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And at, at schools too, there's like often a section where they have. Flyers and other things. I think this superintendent has to sign off on anything that's distributed in schools, but once you have done it one time, it can go everywhere. I feel maybe.
Yeah, no, he had a tour last week and he was so friendly and positive and said that he would work with us. Um, and that's great. I mean, I actually ran into that the OYP holiday event at Alvin's earlier tonight and, uh, Rihanna was there. Um, and, um, were you there too, Corey? I didn't see you.
I didn't see Tom. You didn't see me. So we're.
It's like a Where's Waldo library staff and trustees. But anyways, I saw him there and he was, yeah, they have a board meeting tonight too, apparently. Anyway, but well, I think those are all good points and I'm going to circle back to, to, uh, uh, marketing, Lisa, and find out how we can get it out in the community. Cause it's really something.
So pretty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I just want to say that I've spoken with some seniors in, um, when we were canvassing and in our neighborhood and they said, this is exactly what they'd like to see, something like this. It's absolutely beautiful, stunning.
Excellent. Thank you, Rianna, and thank you, everybody. Um, Finance Committee?
Yeah, I, um, want to thank Tom and Jean for getting the emergency and with the, the emergency board meeting together. And I know we've gone back and forth for a while, but was glad that we went with MNT Bank and, you know, we were able to resolve that. And now you guys have a new relationship with MNT. So thank you for your efforts on that.
Corey, for your work getting us.
Yeah. And then, um, the other thing, I sent out an email to the trustees, um, just to continue an education. I took a virtual class, um, Public Library Finance and the Trustees for the Share Responsibilities. It's a really good, um, it's a good, uh, class to take. I think it's very insightful for me anyways. I think, uh, for my role and just, you know, um, roles, responsibilities, how to keep controls. So the libraries, you know, know that, you know, there's a distribution of, um, functions and, uh, allows us to operate in a transparent way. So I'd recommend everyone just looking at that if you have time. It's an hour and twenty minutes. So it's not short, but if you're free watching a movie. Do a virtual. But anyway, that's it for the.
Thank you. Yes. Um, you, the next one is what Tuesday, five to six thirty. That's on construction, managing and financing a construction site, uh, project. Um, Personnel Committee would be Lucille. I don't think they have anything. She didn't give us anything to report. So we're going to say not this month. Um, Policy Committee.
Thank you. Um, I shared with the trustees are, um, the, um, meeting room rental policy provisions. Um, and detailed some of the changes. A lot of them are procedural and clarifications to help people understand the room rental policy. Um, I shared, um, I went point by point through a lot of them. Um, um, I'll just mention a few of them. Uh, one is to have the policy preceding the application. So that way people can look at what the policy is before they then fill out the application. Um, uh, um, there's a clarification about the payment timeframe, uh, no show cancellation of the room rental is defined. Um, room rental, room responsibility policy, including carpet requirement to protect floors from heavy equipment and instruments. Um, and fees that might be assessed if there is any damage to the premises or equipment. Um, uh, there was a theater and meeting room fee increases. Um, they went up. They had not been changed for many, many years. Um, and they were seventy-five dollars for up to four hours. They're now two hundred dollars up to four hours. Um, it's still less expensive than many of our neighboring libraries. The meeting room only, um, the fee was thirty-five dollars for up to four hours. It's now seventy-five dollars for up to four hours. Again, those fees have not been increased for many years and are still less expensive than neighboring libraries. Um, the overtime policy was clarified and the fee was set. And there's a slight fee increase for rentals of the Steinway piano. That rental went from twenty-five dollars to fifty dollars. The projector, the same from twenty-five to fifty and the wireless microphone from twenty to twenty-five dollars. Um, so, uh, there was a copy in everyone's packets. Um, I would like to just applaud the staff and administration at the library for, and the ad hoc committee for all of their incredibly hard work and detailed work. And also my, um, my colleagues on the Policy Committee as well for their work and their insight into this. And I would move that we adopt the policies for the use of New Rochelle Public Library facilities. Um, again, you can refer to it in here. May I have a second?
Can I ask some?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Can I offer a time to ask questions? Yeah.
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 Um, I'm just curious how, about the rental rates, because it does seem, I, I understand that they have been increased, but it does seem like pretty steep increases. Um, so I'm just wondering how, you know, how did you come up with the numbers? Why is it important that they're increased?
We, we did actually, um, mull over this issue, uh, long and hard, the staff, the great ad hoc committee. And those people were Toby Sevres, Lisa Itzkowitz, Ed Roddy, Elizabeth Joseph and myself, um, and, and Fala and the committee too. And, you know, the, the fees that, um, are, uh, that we are, uh, changing have been in, um, in existence, uh, prior, long prior to my arrival here. So they're almost twenty-five years old. So we have not had an increase in that period of time. And when we felt that, um, while we certainly, uh, believe in the mission of making our spaces available to the public, we, we also felt that given the comparatives for room rentals and our neighboring libraries, we thought that it was justified to raise it up just a little bit. One of the things I, I think it's fair to mention, we're not, um, in, 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 in this business to, to make money. I mean, obviously not. Um, but we, you know, there is a revenue line that we try to meet every year. Um, and it's part of our budget. And so to, to that end, yeah, um, we have, of course, discontinued fines for people because we thought there were barriers. But we thought after a lot of consideration that these rates, which have gone up compared to where they were, are still more than, um, affordable and affordable in terms of other libraries and affordable in terms of other, um, spaces in the community that are renting space. That's.
Um, I would also comment as while I was reading this, I thought about the fact that there is a piano tuner who comes in. There is a wear and tear kind of cost to the equipment and materials. So it was nice to show year over year like, well, look, we've gotten, you know, this much revenue from these sources. And I do think, you know, the increase is a hundred percent in some cases, but it doesn't seem unreasonable. Um, and given like, you know, just throwing a big event for, um, for, for family and, and, um, last month, uh, the, this is very reasonable and really accessible, I think. And I, I wondered, um, I didn't see it in here, but I don't know if there was any kind of like hardship clause or like appeal or sliding scale or anything like that. Um, not, not to like, you know, it's like, if, you know, if, if there is like a demonstration of need for, you know, use of the space for a reduced cost, please talk to us kind of a thing, like they do at school when it's like, if, you know, paying for your kid's field trip is a hardship. You know, there's, there are potential resources. I imagine most of the time no one would, well, you know, people would be happy to support the library. Um, but in the event where, you know, it's an only option or they're like, this is, you know, it's just a thought, um, that you could build it in somehow.
I feel like we, I don't know exactly where we alluded to that in this statement or this coffee document, but we did say that if you're a nonprofit, that you would be accepted to the needs of generally for, for commercial.
So all nonprofits are exempt? Is that, is that necessary?
Yeah.
Not, not, not all, but I, I believe we do have language of those.
I think it's important to charge a fee because I think that it's, it's important.
I'm going to appreciate it.
Yeah, I think.
That's exactly.
Yeah. Yeah. I think it's, I think that you will get a, um, it's like you have some investment in the wellbeing of the space when you are also contributing to it. So I'm in favor of, of the, you know, the fees and the increases and everything else. I'm just thinking of, um, you know, I'm just thinking, say hypothetically of like some kids who have an initiative and they can cobble together some money, but it's not quite enough. And like, how could you make it work for them to encourage their entrepreneurial and, you know, the spirit and initiative, while also allowing for the possibility that not everybody can afford it, um, but still being, you know, there for the community. And again, I don't think that's, it's going to be a regular occurrence, but to just allow for it under special circumstances.
Those would be outliers.
The outliers, correct. Yeah.
I, you know. They have the preamble that possibly you could put in that rates have not changed in twenty-five years.
Yeah, we have to put it in perspective. Um, you know, I, I think Corey's right about people appreciating, um, a space that they have to pay a fee for. The other element is that, um, our space, our, uh, our spaces are used frequently and it's competitive. And if we, if, if we had lower fees, then people may feel more willing to book a space and then choose not to use it, which would then mean that other organizations may not use it because they just decided not, not to go forward. But I think, um, just sort of taking the other side of it, um, Whitney's comment about, you know, um, perhaps you waive a fee or reduce the fee in a hardship instance. I have to be honest with you. There have been occasions in the past where, um, the people have spoken to us and we've found a way to, to make it work. But maybe what we should be doing is instead of kind of dealing with it, uh, when it happens, maybe codifying it and putting it in language so that people, so that all people know, other than the people who are feeling emboldened to ask.
That's something that we can find some language, I'm sure.
And I, I think part of that conversation was if it's a program of the library can support and turn it into part of our, our mission that you would consider a partnership opportunity, but otherwise that they get the sliding scale.
I mean, that's a nice idea too, that it's like going to serve the library in other ways. And therefore the fee can be waived.
And, and we've done that.
Reduced.
Same, right. We have, we have decided in certain instances to become a sponsor, which allows the program, um, the, the room rental piece to be waived, you know, when the, when it is a program, that's obvious that it will serve the needs of the community.
Something that we can add in.
Um, and I'll also say I know how long in the making this policy, this policy has been. So I don't, I don't think anyone's interested in like belaboring. Um, but I do think, you know, I, I, I don't know how comfortable people are if we want to wait another month or if we want to say with the changes we talked about, we can vote to approve it. And once you've decided on what language makes the most sense and, you know, then it's been approved and you can publicize it. How do people feel about that?
That makes sense.
I'm agreeing with that.
That makes the most sense.
Okay. So then, so then do you want to make a motion to approve with, right? And then, okay, so you do it.
So, yeah. Yeah. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve, uh, um, meeting room rental policy as it stands now. And with, uh, um, with the caveat that we will be adding language as we just described to, for this sliding scale and potentially, um, yes, for the sliding scale and hardship. And so to, which will come at another date, a later date soon.
We believe you. So I will second your, your motion. Okay. And then can we get, is, are all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Any opposed?
No.
Any extensions? Good. Then this room rental policy has passed and congratulations. This has been a really a long time in the making and, um, it's going to be great to have that to fall back on. Um, and of course, just going to state for the record that all policies are open for discussion. Um, but it's good to have this one in particular in place.
Excuse my ears, but I just have a question. Since we are instituting new pricing for the rooms, will that, I guess, equally affect?
I think we should make an effect as of January first, maybe just as a new year, sort of, you know, seems fair, right? I mean, it's a natural. Yeah, 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 yeah. It's a part of the new year. Yeah.
Yes. So it's approved with the changes based on hardship sliding scale and other kind of waivers and exceptions plus the as of date of January first, twenty twenty-four. Thank you. Great. Um, Special Projects Committee, I think that's not here. Public discussion. I see there are throngs of people waiting to discuss, lining up. Yeah.
To get in line and.
Get in line, sign them up. Good. Okay. So with that, then, um, is there any other comments or questions? Then I will make, um, a motion to adjourn the meeting. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Any opposed? Then we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, and happy holidays and happy new year.
Everybody, yeah.